Brazos County will meet regular session on March twenty-six, two thousand and nineteen, at ten a.m. in the Commissioners' Courtroom in the County Administration Building, two hundred South Texas Avenue, Suite one oh six. First item on the agenda is to pledge allegiance to the U.S. Texas flag and Commissioner Colley will lead this.
Will you bow with me? Heavenly Father, we do acknowledge that this is the day that the Lord hath made, and we will rejoice and be glad in it. We thank you for every blessing, every opportunity, every challenge. And, Lord, we continue to ask that you bless us with your wisdom. Bless the first responders, those military personnel serving all over the world, protecting our freedoms. Thank you for our law enforcement officers and all of those first responders that stand guard, protect us, and keep us safe. Lord, we continue to accept that your will be done, that your kingdom come. In the mighty name of Jesus, we ask. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
The second item on the agenda is called for citizens' input and our concerns. Hearing none, we will consider and take action on Agenda items three through twenty-three. Number three is acceptance of a Visa gift card donation to the Juvenile Department in the amount of a hundred dollars from Attorney Ray Thomas. The gift card was used to purchase food items for youth taking field trips during the upcoming summer months.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number four is request for approval from the Jail Administrator of a rescheduled date for April thirteenth for inmate work crew for work on Wixton Valley Gumbo Cook-Off due to weather conditions prohibiting the original date of March the second, two thousand and nineteen.
Move approval.
Oh, second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number five is request approval for a nonprofit organization application for Brazos County inmate work crew labor with reefs across Texas to level veterans' gravestones in the Bryan City Cemeteries. Work will be ongoing prior to the National Reef of Cross America Day, December fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number six is request from Bruce Eric for an exception to travel policy regarding maximum hotel rate of a hundred and forty-five dollars in Austin, Texas. He will be attending the Labor Employment Law Conference, May eighth through tenth, two thousand and nineteen. Host hotel is sold out. Rate per night is tw- two hundred and twenty-four dollars, ten cents, plus tax, on reservations made at different hotel near the conference center.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number seven is approval of the following job descriptions: tech temporary ten forty, class code twenty-six sixty-eight for road and bridge.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number eight is request from Fleet Services for Constable Precinct Two, Unit seven oh eight, be retired during the FY nineteen due to the amount of repairs necessary to keep this unit in service.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number nine is approval of the order exempting professional services contract with Dr. Roy Lapentis from the competitive solicitation pursuant to Texas Local Government Code two six two point zero-two-four A four.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number ten is approval of deductive change order for contract eighteen dash one forty-three on Creek Bank Stabilization on Leonard Road in the amount of forty-four thousand and fifteen dollars to remove the contingency that was not used. The original contingency was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and only a hundred and five, nine eighty-five, was used.
Judge.
Judge.
If I may, if I may amend that, the deductive change order amount is correct, but the contingency was originally fifty thousand.
Oh, okay.
I apologize for that error.
No, I'm sorry.
It was originally fifty thousand, and we only used fifty-nine eighty-five of that. So then the net decrease is still correct, but we made an error confusing it with the net.
Tell me one more time, the...
The deductive change order is still correct, and we're still reducing the contract by forty-four thousand and fifteen dollars. But the original fifty, the original contingency was fifty thousand dollars.
Fifty, and not a hundred and fifty.
Yes, ma'am. I apologize.
So only five thousand nine hundred and eighty-five was used?
Yes, sir.
Okay, gotcha.
Due to our Gary Arnold project manager did a great job riding that closely, so...
He always does. Both of y'all do. Thank you.
I'd like to move approval with the corrections as stated by Mr. Nguyen.
Second.
Motion made seconded to approve the corrected amounts. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number eleven is award RFP nineteen dash zero nine six for rehabilitation of Arrington Road, recommended award Larry Young Paving, Inc., and I think we've got...
It's not public key. It's not listed as a public key. So there should be a comment at the end where it's citizens' input or concerns.
Well, if I...
Whatever.
I might respond if this was...
Right, okay, that's allowed.
So, Tim Powell, come on up.
Four minutes.
Right here, sir.
Yes.
My name's Tim Powell. I live in Indian Lakes neighborhood, which is off of Arrington Road. I wasn't able to make the meeting that they had last month or so ago when they talked about this improvement, but I simply just have some questions. I don't have an issue with recommending the award to the company listed there, but I do have some questions about it, and I guess the main one is that why is it so important that this gets done now, especially with the construction that is going on off of Arrington Road? I don't know what the situation is going to be as far as will you have to close the road while it's being constructed? Will you, will you close one side of it, do some construction, and then open the other side of it, and just have some kind of a pilot car situation there? Arrington does get used quite a bit by Nantucket and Indian Lakes residents that are going over to take their kids to school and whatnot. Of course, we do have backways out of the neighborhood now to Highway six. I am kind of the designated guy to keep track of activities around the area, and I report those to the neighborhood folks in Indian Lakes, and I'd just like to be able to tell them something about what to expect, when's this going to start, how long it's going to be, and what are the situations there. The other thing is, you know, and I know a lot of water's gone under the bridge since all this was discussed, but, you know, originally, we had talked about having a three-lane road there, and I've read some, some articles and that essentially you weren't able to get the right-of-ways that you needed for a three-lane road, and so now it's just a two-lane road, and so I'm kind of wondering who was not giving the right-of-ways? Was it, I understood that most of the right-of-way was supposed to come across on the west side or the side across from Nantucket, from the developers, and I don't know if the developers weren't giving that right-of-way or what. Maybe that's not an answer, question you can answer, but those are some of the things I'm concerned about, would kind of like to know what's going on with that.
So here, let me just kind of respond back and tell you what, what I, my understanding and what I believe went on out there. Nantucket gave some right-of-way a long time ago, and what the developer, the developers over on the other side of the road gave up, and I don't remember the number, twenty-something feet, which was equivalent to what was given up years ago. So, but we needed, if we were to make a three-lane, we've got now eighty feet, and it would take a hundred and five feet to, to get a three-lane. So somebody was going to have to give up another twenty-five feet.
Right.
And I suspect we'd be condemning, and maybe we'd have to be condemning on the Nantucket side, too, because it really wouldn't be right to take all the land. I mean, we're, that developer's already giving up twenty foot. Wouldn't make, just wouldn't be correct to go to forty-five foot on that side and make that developer give up everything, so I think we'd have had to then go look at, okay, if we were expanding to the hundred and five, we'd have to be looking on both sides, and all of those folks that own their acre, two acres, or whatever lot would not be happy with anybody if, if we were forced to have to condemn all of them to get the property. The traffic will work. I'm confident with us having Mesa Verde coming out of Nantucket, I mean, out of Indian Lakes. It's, the, the traffic count out there has gone down significantly. So a two-lane and what, what we're going to, this rehab is, is going to, the, the travel lanes are a little bit wider than what you've got out there, and then we've got a two-foot shoulder on either side. So it's going to be a safer road, it's going to, it can handle the traffic better, and I mean, I know that there's a development going in right now, but if, once that development's finished, there may be another development going in, and who knows, another one?
Right.
So do we just put it off for the next twenty years because a development kicks in? My, my opinion in this whole thing was that it's best to go ahead and get it done while it's fairly low traffic. Once that development goes in, those folks may start coming out on Arrington, which raises the traffic count. So it, it just really seemed like best time to do it is now, and we, we're, we're building that to handle truck traffic, too. You know, that, that'll, it should hold up for whether it's concrete trucks or whatever's coming out of that subdivision, we should be able to handle that.
So I appreciate the explanations there, and I'm sure you guys have thought about this a lot. The other question, I guess, is then, Halmon, do you anticipate road closures, and what type of closure would it be? Would it be a one lane and alternating or...
Our engineer...
Yeah, I'm the county engineer. So we are going to have Arrington Road closed only to local traffic, so people who use it as just a conveyance won't be able to use it at all. So to answer your question, it's only open to local traffic only. And like the judge mentioned, the problem we are trying to solve with Arrington Road is a condition problem, not a traffic problem. The projection for the hundred and five feet three-lane, that is for a thorough plan concept, which is for fifty, twenty, twenty-fifty projection. We are not there yet, but we cannot leave the condition of the road as is right now, it's unsafe. That's the problem we are trying to solve, not, you know, something that's anticipated twenty-five years from now, so.
Okay.
I'm deciding to do it.
Okay, so you're saying that the, the roads will be open to local traffic?
Only to local traffic, yeah.
So people in Indian Lakes and Nantucket and anybody else that lives down there?
Who live around there, who, yes, should be able to do it.
And how long, how long a delayed period are we expecting?
The current construction time given to us, I mean, you have to take into account inclement weather and, you know, other issues, but it's a hundred and fifty days.
Okay.
So, but again, you know, weather and other unforeseen elements.
Sure. And when do you anticipate the start on this construction?
So it's, it depends on our purchasing department and the contract, you know, however long that takes. It's around eight weeks from, eight weeks or, you would think six, three weeks from now? Six, three weeks.
Just roughly, two, two months or so?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I think, I think that answers everything I know.
Can I clarify something for you?
Yeah.
The local traffic only is for people that have a driveway on that road. Indian Lakes will not be able to come through that.
Okay, so we'll have to use the Mesa Verde.
Yeah, when we close it, it's for local traffic only, and local traffic only, and the people that live on that road.
Okay.
Okay?
Oh, yeah, that's good clarification, I appreciate that.
Yeah, that, that was really one of the, Mr. Powell, that was one of the issues. Steve Aldrich, I'm Precinct One Commissioner, I'm glad that you're here today to, to talk about this. I do have some thoughts on long haul before we get two thousand and fifty and the concept thoroughfare plan for what's called for there, how we might have some solutions relative to the continuing development that is happening just to the west of Arrington Road, and will probably happen further south on the development of Arrington Road. So I'd like to visit with you and anybody that's got any questions in Indian Lakes about this and clarify. One of the things was is the conditions of Arrington Road were not really what we thought we wanted to have for people in transit, but we had to get Mesa Verde done first.
Yes.
Then there was some construction that was coming up with the apartment complex that was up to the north and there in the city part of it. So what we wanted to do was is be able, in fact, our engineer came to us after Mesa Verde was complete, and we were thinking about this in the first place, and then said, hey, let's wait and delay this for a little period of time to where we don't have quite as much going on here. So we, for the, I think the, the concern that you brought up initially, we've already made a concession there to delay that for some of the construction traffic that's going on out in the area, but now the time has come to where we need to go ahead and get this done.
Okay. I know, maybe it's not an issue with you guys, but, you know, I know Greens Prairie Reserve is supposed to go all the way over to Greens Prairie Road. Is there any thought about having them access that property from Greens Prairie instead of Arrington during all this construction? They're, they're starting on the Arrington side, and they're moving towards Greens Prairie.
So the access from Greens Prairie Road?
Correct.
An issue that, that development is in the city, so it's not something that the county can, you know, have, have a word on, so if the city allows them to have an access from Greens Prairie Road, which I'm sure they are going to at some point.
Yes, eventually.
We are not aware of when that timing is going to take place, so that's nothing the county can really find out.
Right, okay.
Well, what I will say is, is the developer on the property that you're talking about, the old Margarave's Track, okay, has been accommodative and has done a lot to communicate with people in the area, and I think will continue to do so, and if there's anything that we need to do to facilitate further communication in that regard, I'm more than glad to.
Okay, yeah, they, they have been very well communicating with us, so we appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Powell.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wolf.
Can I make one comment?
Okay, Gary.
So these people aren't in there gesturing, marrying, setting up a site where we can email out and text out updates and correspondence of where we are in this project, so y'all all be able to get on that, get on that surface, so we'll let everybody know what happened.
I appreciate it, thanks.
Good morning.
Morning. Marie Wolf.
I live in Nantucket. I'm basically not having a problem with what the paving company put in, except I had a few questions, and I, I really think you really need to rethink what you're doing with Arrington. So first I want to say, and I don't really think this was answered, but I wanted to answer it. On three to twenty eighteen, Commissioner Aldrich was interviewed by WTAW, and he said construction won't start until heavy truck traffic finishes going in and out of those residential subdivisions that are being constructed. In an email that I received from an open records, the county engineer said, and I'm just going to read excerpts and I'm putting it to the record, "The two development constructions that will occur right after along with our project will tear up the new surface, and we will be repairing this road before its first anniversary. We should come back to this road in three to five years when both the developments are fairly in place and the road will actually need improvements. At this time, we can also determine if we need to add additional lanes and improve Harpers Ferry and South Oak intersections and justify expanded scope." So the question is, what's changed? We, we really need to look at what has changed and understand those, if the roads are going to be ruined in a year, why do it now? Is that not waste? Couldn't you use that two million dollars or one point five to do something someplace else that makes sense?
So I, I think, I mean, certainly there's plenty of places that we could use the money. There's no question about that, but Arrington Road will, I think, by the time the construction is finished out there on the Margarave's Track, I think it's the Margarave's Track that they're actually developing now, is that correct, Steve?
Yes, sir, they're, they're, they're starting to do that, but it's going to be over a period of time.
So...
At least eight years.
Well, so they will be, that, those trucks will be driving up and down the current Arrington Road, which was not designed to handle that kind of weight limits, and so by the time they get, if we waited until they got through with that subdivision, the development in there, the condition of, of Arrington Road would be horrible, and we would have everybody that lit, I mean, most people can not, you know, you can drive around and go out to six or do other things, but the people who actually live on Arrington have got to use it. So the, the, the condition of that road, I believe, would be horrible by the time that development finishes. And I, you know, I know that sometimes people make statements because based on the facts that they know the day they make the statement, that's what they think. Things change, and it looks like for the safety and for all that goes out on out there, the best thing to do is to make Arrington Road a safer road to travel bikes. When we finish with it, the travel lane will be a little bit wider, and then it's going to have a, a small shoulder on either side. So it's gonna, it'll be a better road to travel, and it will be built to the standard to handle that truck traffic. A, a loaded truck is worth, is, is it, is the equivalent in road damage to about ninety-six hundred cars, and so it, I, my, my opinion, our professional opinion, is that that road would, would be in terrible condition by the time we got through, and it's best to go ahead and get it done now.
Oh, it's terrible condition right now with what they...
So you're just, you're just telling me that that's...
Well, no, no, with what they're doing, that they're just ruining the road. The developers are ruining the road as it stands today.
And, and they have the right to use the road just like everybody else.
I, I don't disagree, but they don't have a right to, to ruin it, right? And you, and I did call, I think in November, because there was a problem. My husband and I were going to church early Sunday morning, and there was mud on the road, at least inches thick, two or three inches thick. So, you know, the county, I called the county, the county came out, they did clear it, and now that they, they're sweeping the road to kind of keep that off. So, I mean, they're doing things that are causing problems on the road today, and unless somebody complains or reacts, nobody, nothing happens.
Well, and I'm okay with...
So I understand where you're coming from, and I'm not disagreeing, Arrington needs to be improved. Nobody's ever said that. The problem is, is it right to do it today? And I'll, I'll accept your answer, but...
Well, Ms. Wolf, I'd like to address that, okay? I really would, because you called to attention my March second, two thousand and eighteen comments that were made?
Yes.
Okay, and precisely as the judge has said, conditions change, things change, information changes. If I was held to every statement that I ever made in a dynamic environment, particularly as not, as developmentally dynamic an environment as Precinct One is, for something that I said, and then additional information came out, I'm sorry that I didn't have another interview with WTAW. But when our professional staff, our engineer, our people who are giving us recommendations as to how to handle transit and traffic all over, I mean, in, in, you know, the Regional Mobility Authority...
And that's why we're doing this.
My biggest priority since I've been on city council in College Station for this area and in Brazos County, my number-one priority is transportation, infrastructure, because of development and growth where we're behind. So what I'd like to say is, is I, I understand and I appreciate your comments, and I certainly appreciate you making us aware of the fact that there were some issues with the construction during a particularly wet period of time and that we were able to do that. I think that's the type of collaborative communication that we would all like to have in Brazos County. But when I have a professional, our engineer tells me or tells the Commissioners' Court that this is something that we need to do, I think that we need to pay attention to who those professionals are, what their advice and recommendations are, and that is specifically what we're about and doing here today.
And I just read from an email that she sent both you and the judge, and didn't copy the rest of the Commissioners' Court, but, so I'd like to hear from her as to what change that made this irrelevant anymore.
Yeah, I would like to clarify, like the Commissioner said, the timeframes of the construction of those developments were, we were going to work on Arrington Road, if you remember, almost a year back. This project has already been delayed by a year. So if you take into context, what I was trying to say was, what was, I was trying to say was a year ago. Now we have new information, the ranch at Arrington Road will almost be done with their heavy construction by the time we are, we are almost midway. Their, their target date was around June, July, the last I had an update on. And while we are working on our project, markets also will have progressed quite a bit on their initial heavy equipment and heavy truck traffic, you know, construction. Now, the home construction, that, as you said, it's going to take them eight, ten, twelve, fifteen, I don't know how many years depending on the, you know, real estate market and the, you know, in general, economy of the country and this area, but then we cannot be waiting for two thousand houses to first come there to solve something that needs attention today. You just mentioned how bad Arrington Road is, so again, I just want to repeat, we're trying to solve a conditions problem, not a, a, you know, traffic problem. We are trying to solve a safety issue. Arrington Road is unsafe right now. The truck traffic is going to ruin the condition of the road, which is already in a bad situation right now. We are trying to make it better so that residents like you don't have issues, you know, commuting through your daily life.
I, I like to appreciate that.
So this is a step-by-step process, it's not, I have told you this before, it's not like we do this once and we are never going to come back to Arrington Road, and we are never going to, you know, improve it or what needs to be done twenty-five years from now. It's, this is a process, growth takes, it's a step-by-step process, we need to do this today so that we can, you know, it's not something that's going to cost us ten million dollars in fifteen years. So if it's an incremental thing, we, we get there quicker, and it'll be a better solution for you as a resident as well, so.
My point is, I see this as waste, and I'm concerned about that. When you spend two million dollars on a road that you believe is going to have to be redone in a year or two and, and/or expanded, if it looks like it.
No, I don't agree with that, no. It won't be, it won't need to be done in a year or two. Again, you are mis, you know, quoting me. What I was talking about was a year back, because at that time, none of the construction had begun. At this point, one of the projects was almost going to be complete by the time we start, and the second one would have already progressed quite, quite a bit, at least with their initial, you know, clearing and rubbing and whatnot. So what you're trying to tell me is what I was saying a year back, but at, at this point today, we don't need to come to Arrington Road and work on it again in a year, no, we won't need to. If in ten years, yeah, if you ask me in ten years, do we, would we need to do something with it? We might, we'll have to look at it at that time, we'll have to do a traffic study and, you know, all of that, but what you're trying to quote me is, is what I had in information that was a year back, we have different information now, different situation, different circumstances.
And, and I hear you repeating exactly what Morgan and Mitchell said, that it's the condition, which, which was a strange setup in one of my open records, discovered that the Mitchell and Morgan was also appeared to be working for the developer, and you didn't have that certificate of authority that she had put in for the city. So I'm concerned that...
Well, let me just, let me just cut you off. It's been wait, normally it's four minutes, you know, for a discussion, and I think you've made your points, and...
Okay, can I ask some of the rest, other questions now, because I think they're important, too? I'd like to know what the total bill of this road is. You know, we have one point five here from the construction, and I know there's an engineer that's got to be paid, and there was right-of-way purchase, is that going to be close to the two million, or...
Ms. Wolf, I'm, I'm sorry.
Ms. Wolf, I'm sorry, but the rule is you have four minutes. You're well over four minutes.
So that's, I mean, that information would be made of...
Well, I've asked you to put this on the agenda back in February and I heard nothing. So we could have a conversation. So I'm trying to get that conversation going now. And yeah, I hear four minutes, but, you know, maybe Karen, oh, we're, will give me her four minutes. Will you give me your four minutes, Karen?
Yes.
Can I...
It's, we're way over four, we're way over four.
You're over eight.
Yeah, it's...
We don't have any provisions for 18 minutes, I'm sorry.
If you've got, if you've got a request for information, if you make that request, it'll be provided to you.
Ms. Wolf.
Okay, I'll send the request.
Okay.
I've sent many requests and I don't really get information. I just have one more thing and I want to do this.
If we've got the information, you'll get it. I mean, that's, if you ask for something that we don't have, then we won't dig...
Well, it's okay, but you can take, we don't have it.
Well, if we've got it, if we've got it, how you ask it, it'll be provided.
Okay, I have a suggestion. Okay, this will fix a number of problems. The last time I was here, we talked about it being only 80 foot right of way. I'm asking that the county look into giving this road to the city...
I appreciate you coming up, but this doesn't have me, we're going to deal with Arrington. Thank you for coming up. Okay, I think we've got a motion and a second.
No, but we do.
Okay.
I'm on approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 12 is approval of professional services contract 19-122 for psychological evaluations for applicants by Dr. Roy Lutnis.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 13 is approval agreement of 19-124 with Procore Technologies for Project Management Software.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 14 is renewal of contract 19-126R for mail services with Enteg.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 15 is renewal of contract 19-132R for hot-mixed asphalt recommended renewal, Knife River, items 2, 4, 6, 7, 8, 10, 12, and 14. Larry Young Paving, items 1, 3, 5, 9, and 11. And line item 13 is for City of College Station.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 16 is approval of 2019 Wine and Roses Half Marathon and 5K Event scheduled for April 14, 2019, which will require roadway and lane closures on Over Alliance Road and Coraber Road and Wallace Road. Area-wide protective will provide traffic control assistance during the event sites located in Precinct Two. Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 17 is consider and take action on Wickson Creek Special Utility District Utility Permit to construct a road board for a one-inch water line under Wilcox Lane, 1,500 feet northeast of FM 974 sites located in Precinct Two. Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 18 is expenditure journal entries FY 18/19, 030065 through 030070.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 19 is request for tax refund penalty and interest due to US Mail from the following, and I think we've got some issues. Let me see, let me take a look at that again.
It's A and B.
Is this? Well, there's...
Did you look at them?
One of those, is Christie here? Yeah, the first one, we need to, we need to deal with them separately because I think Doug Kessler...
We cannot?
This one does not meet the law. What he did was put his payment into a box out on campus and it didn't get to the post office and didn't get file stamped, get stamped by the time that it had to be stamped. And so, I mean, you know, whether you're dealing with IRS or Brazos County, we got to follow the laws. And the law says if you've got an envelope that is stamped with the correct date on it and, you know, so that it gets started in the process, things would have been okay. But by dropping it in a box there on campus that wasn't actually a mailbox and then, of course, we all know that the mail goes to Houston to get stamped. And so, I mean, the proper way to have done it, if you wanted to do that, was to go to the post office and get them hand-stamped. So this one does not, the first one, Doug Kessler, just doesn't meet what the law says that it has to be. So I don't see how we can, you know...
So we want to remove it?
So, so we can approve. I offer a motion that we approve B.
Well, let me, let me look back at B again. I think B met the criteria if I remember right.
Okay.
But we, we need to, I think...
Remove A.
Deny.
Do we?
They're asking for a question, they've asked...
I move that we deny A.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to deny A. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
I make a...
Let me, let me take one more look.
Oh, you're still looking?
Because I think the second one, they...
Do you not see this, sweetheart?
Commissioner, I didn't even think it because it's a, you're like a tax, we're thinking of it like a tax refund.
Yeah, and it, yeah, it wasn't, and I...
Do we need, is it reasonable for us to consider deferring action until we get further detail?
We could, I'm pretty sure that, I just wanted to confirm it before we actually passed it. But I'm pretty sure, I was confident that A did not meet. But I really, I've had a lot of things going on, so I can't remember what the story was on Caitlin Addy. I think it qualified, but maybe we ought to delay that until next week.
Well, why don't we table it?
I move that we defer, I move that we defer action on this agenda item.
That's second.
Motion made, seconded.
And we've already taken...
We've taken action on A today.
B.
I mean, yeah, B is the one we're deferring.
So we'll table B, so we have a motion to table B?
Yes.
We do.
To defer action.
Steve.
Okay. So a motion made and seconded to defer B until next week. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Then number 20 is budget amendments FY 18/19. And they didn't put a cover sheet on here. Let me see. So... It's going to be 26.1 to...
26.10.
26.10.
10. Move approval. Second.
Motion made, seconded, to approve budget amendments for 18/19, 26.1 to 26.10. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 21 is personnel change status.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 21 is, number 22 is payment of claims. Claims to be paid by Brazos County, claim number 8013398 through claim number 8013570.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 23 is acknowledgment of the following certificates of courses of completion for Commissioner Colley, Open Meetings Act and Public Information Act.
Move approval. No, it's an acknowledgement.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
No, sorry.
Okay, so the excellent acknowledgment, acknowledgment of the month, reports submitted by March, in March of 2019. Number 25 is juvenile director's report on detention population. Lynda.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. At the present time, we have 29 youth in detention, that's 25 males and four females. One of those females is an out-of-county youth from Washington County that's contracting with us, rabid. And we have 21 kids on electronic monitors.
Thank you, Lynda. And number 26 is sheriff's report on inmate population. Sheriff.
Nice to have Lynda warm up the crowd. I wish I had her numbers though.
We do too.
We do too. Yeah, it would be great.
658. If I can read my writing, there's just 560 of those are female, or males, and 98 are females. We have 44 with ankle monitors and 19 pending.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff. Number 27 is announcement of interest status of possible future agenda topics.
Don't forget, tire amnesty Saturday, this Saturday, at the Expo Rock Lot. Tire amnesty simply means that there are no fees. We will take all your tires, no rims, for free, from 10 until 3. Please help us out. There might be.
Thanks, Commissioner. Thanks for working on that. Any other announcements? Number 28, call for citizens' input and our concerns. Patrick.
Judge Commissioners, Patrick Gendron, resident of Brazos County. I, we had a juvenile board meeting last week and there was a good discussion about some things that have changed at the juvenile center. It appears from comments made by the director, the juvenile services, and the juvenile referee that more cases are coming into the court system, through the court, and fewer cases are becoming through with what are called paper referrals. So, and the juvenile referee gave her opinion on why that's happening. It's been happening for about a year, and I've experienced it for about a year. We have more cases coming in through the juvenile court instead of cases coming in what are called paper referrals. They're kind of informal, where we leave the, we leave all the lawyers out of the process and leave it to the professionals at juvenile services, the probation officers, and those folks deal with a lot of the cases. But now, recently, we have more cases coming through the court system. But anyway, I ran some numbers and I found the stats. We number our cases, 01J and the year number. So for the past two years, 2016, 2017, the case numbers in December were in the 300 range. In 2018, they were almost doubled in the 700 range. So, so I know budget time's coming up and I'll tell you, the probation officers bear the brunt of this increase. And we have probation officers that are carrying probably twice the caseload almost. It feels that way, especially the court unit, and they're carrying cases longer so. So the brunt of a lot of this is on the backs of the probation officers. So I just wanted to keep Commissioners Court in mind of that. And also, related to that, I'd like to encourage the Commissioners, the county, to continue to expand their relationship with Big Brothers Big Sisters. It's a mentoring program, I'm sure y'all have all heard of it. And I know that the juvenile service is working with them to some extent right now. And I have my own mentors, interns from A&amp;M, who are at the back of the, back of the room there. And I have them paired up with some kids. These are college, these young ladies here are college students at A&amp;M and I've had them paired up with some kids. And they represent three of the seven I had this semester that are interns and mentors and we pair them up with kids. But, and I know the probation department has their own internship program and they work with, trying to get community members. But Big Brothers Big Sisters is a, you know, is an entity out there that has been doing this for a long time. They're good at it. So I just keep that on your minds for, you know, budget time coming up and requests. I know Reverend Terry Doherty there has been working on it for a long time and they're really good at what they do. So I did, those are just a couple of things I wanted to bring to light to the Commissioner. Thank you, Judge.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other citizen input and our concerns?
Actually, I just wanted everyone to know something.
Okay, come on over.
I've put in my questions because I have them written down. If you could possibly answer those questions to me.
We can't in this...
No, not right now, but you promised you would, so if you could give...
So if you gave us...
If they have questions, yeah, that would be great.
Yeah.
Because one of those has to do with trucks through the neighborhoods and trying to limit that.
If we've got the information, we can provide it for you. That's all, I mean, that's...
Well, if it was a request that you asked the contractor not to drive through the developments, can the inmates make tickets and moves to get their trucks?
Well, I can't, I can't talk with you in the citizens' input and our concerns, but I'd be glad to talk with you after court.
Okay, great, thank you.
With that, the next item is to adjourn. Thank you all.